Welcome everyone to the meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or for more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide your request. If you're here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. Can we have the roll call, please?
Clint Bryant. Jim Doan.
Here.
Fred Zorko.
Here.
Thomas Braley. Robert Hanley.
Here.
Jim Nightingale.
Present.
Yolanda Jones.
Here.
Jack Nash.
Here.
Chairman, you have a call.
Fred, did you call Fred?
Yeah.
Where was I?
I don't know. You're in the other room.
Don't answer that. The first item on our agenda, or the next item, I guess I should say, is the minutes of the December meeting. We have receipt codes, hopefully you have looked at them, and if there are any changes, deletions, additions, this would be the time to bring that out. So, if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
Certainly.
And moved and supported, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We need also to approve our agenda as the next item. You have that in front of you. We did, of course, as you know, add the presentation on the capital improvement plan, so we will have that tonight. Any changes to the agenda? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item of new business is election of officers, which we'll do in January. So, the floor is open.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
You have a motion.
I move that we continue the officers that were served in 2018, that is Commissioner Doan as chair, Commissioner Nightingale as vice-chair, and Commissioner Hanley as treasurer.
Treasurer or secretary.
I'm sorry, I'm treasurer of too many things, secretary.
Secretary, good point. We have no money, so we have to.
He knows how to keep the books.
Are there any further nominations for officers for 2019? I don't hear any. Therefore, all those in favor of the motion to continue existing officers?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also carries. The next item is presentation of case J19002, dryer building addition for premier laundry. If you are here to present, you may proceed.
Thank you, sir. My name's Gail Sol, I'm with Pumford Construction. We're proposing a 21,040 square foot addition to a current facility for Michigan premier laundry on Cumberland. The 21,000 square foot addition meets all setbacks, we have no change of use, we're currently adding some additional parking for employees. This addition would allow growth in the company. They're projecting an 80% growth with potential for 70 new jobs coming up here in the next couple of years. The construction of the building is pre-engineered, block foundation, concrete footings, sixteenth floor. The use of it, currently right now, the facility has their laundry coming in at their truck dock, it circles in from there, goes to the washer, and then to the addition that we did about four years ago, which is the dryer area, and then it all circles back up to the front again, where they go through the process of the folding and packing, and goes right back out the same truck dock it came in. This new addition will allow them to grow, it'll be a little more efficient, it can actually go from the washer to the dryer, and then this new facility will be where all that folding and pressing and packaging, and along with that new four-doc truck bay that is on plans, that will allow it to come in one end and go out the other. It'll be very efficient, it'll add new jobs to the city. Like I said, we did have, I did get a note from the engineer tonight, just so you're all aware of it, we did have to resubmit on the civil drawings. There was a little bit of interpretation on the inverts for the stormwater, and that's all been addressed and resubmitted, so that's currently in the city's hands. Outside of that, any questions as far as the construction?
In the plan that we have, there is just the one entry off Cumberland Street.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How many jobs can we anticipate?
They anticipate 70, sir.
Seven?
Mm-hmm. 80% growth.
Why do they anticipate the 80% growth?
You know, I'm not privileged to all that information, I just spoke with them earlier today just to get that information, but they're adding additional facilities. Right now, they currently, they currently take care of Covenant Health System, Health Source Saginaw, St. Mary's of Saginaw, McLaren Bay Region, and St. Joseph Health System of Tawas, and they didn't tell me who, but there's a potential to adding more companies to that business.
When the trucks come in now to drop off laundry, is that at the, what, is the north end of the building?
That would be the north end, yes, sir, at that truck dock there.
So there's a dock there?
There is, there currently is.
Well, you know, if memory serves me correctly, I think you guys came a couple years back with anticipation of this addition?
We did.
Is that right?
We did. With the addition that we put on, I think it was roughly maybe four years, but with that addition, it was actually designed for a future addition, so.
Yeah, I remember that.
The potential was there back then, yes.
Yeah, I was here, and I thought you guys said you'd be coming back when you explained.
Mm-hmm.
This is for staff. Have all the residents been contacted? Or do they have to?
The residents don't need to be contacted for this.
Okay.
No. But it does follow all the zoning, everything meets every code.
I know, I know, there's nothing really there.
Yeah. Yeah, they're far enough back from any street, the only setback that they would have to follow is the side, which, they're exactly the same as they were before, and then they added a parking, which also follows the.
You almost butt up to the LTRW, right?
That's on the other side of the tracks, they exist in various tracks, yes.
And when are you going to have this done, by the way? We always ask that.
Time frame.
No, you know the weather outside, it's making it a little tough, but I've anticipated about four to five months, so right in that area.
When would you start it?
I would start it as soon as I get a building permit. So I would guess to answer your question, May. May completion.
And Ms. Miller, the engineering questions have been answered?
So, they're on their second rendition of the plans, so engineering still has to get back to them again, but usually after they send their initial comments, as long as they're answered in that second rendition, they're approved, so.
Are there any further questions or comments? Looks pretty straightforward. Is there a lot of interior work that will be done too as part of this?
No, they're adding two restrooms, and that's just, it's another efficiency thing.
A big open space to work in.
Yes, sir. They're actually, they're going to install, they have this, I'm going to call it a cable rail system, where the laundry is in these massive bags, and it runs along that cable to each.
Oh, it's a bear system.
Yeah, it's similar. But other than that, no, no dryers, washers, anything like that.
If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion on the case.
I move that we approve case J19002, and I would probably add a stipulation that they give them at least nine months to complete it due to the weather, and also that it's subject to all the requirements from engineering.
And moved and supported that we approve the case with subsequent approval of engineering. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You're good.
Drive safe.
You too.
Thank you.
Good advice. Our next item is the capital improvement plan presentation, and I bet we have Brian Weiss here.
That is correct. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Weiss, and I am the budget analyst in the Office of Management and Budget for the city. I have been tasked with compiling the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2020, and will be briefly covering the process and some major projects for the upcoming year. Capital Improvement Plan is a tool to help plan for future long-term projects within the city. Our CIP covers six years of planned projects and helps to coordinate efforts between departments, as well as with the city's master plan. Capital improvements are those physical facilities or assets which involve a substantial investment and last for a long period of time. For example, City Hall, or improvements to City Hall, new park pavilion, new bridge, replacements of roads, sewer lines, things like that would constitute capital improvements. And typically, the threshold is about $20,000, so any project exceeding $20,000 must be submitted to be part of the CIP, as long as it meets one of the criteria listed here. So, like I said, land improvements, new buildings, major repairs or replacements, things like The CIP lists the proposed projects along with important information such as location and cost. These projects are prioritized by the department, the planning commission, and the city manager, and is updated annually. And the chart on the left shows the costs of capital projects split by department for fiscal year 2020, and as you can see, water makes up most of the costs, followed by sewer, and then streets, and combined, these three areas make up about 85% of the capital costs of the city. Why prepare CIP? It optimizes use of taxpayer dollars by creating a plan for major investments the city needs to make. This helps departments work together when projects are similar. For example, if a road needs to be repaired, then the water department might want to replace the water main while the road is dug up, it saves time and money, and it just allows for better cohesiveness between the departments, more efficiency. And having a CIP can also encourage economic development and financial stability, as well as create transparency. The CIP process starts with the departments. Department directors are responsible for having plans for future capital needs and submitting project requests on a standard template that OMB creates. Once all of these requests have been received by OMB, we review the requests and discuss any questions or concerns with the departments. Next, a summary of requests is created and provided to the planning commission and the city manager for review. The planning commission and the city manager review and rank each request to establish priority, then they are presented to city council as part of the proposed annual budget for the year. There's a distinction between the way that city council receives the list of capital projects and the way that the planning commission does. The planning commission receives the plan list of capital projects in binders like you have in front of you, that contain each request individually, as well as a summary of projects and anticipated costs for those projects. And the city council receives the requested capital projects as part of the annual budget as proposed, that they approve every year in May. The CIP must be presented to the planning commission for their review and prioritization as part of a requirement under Public Act 33 of 2008. And here's a brief timeline of the capital process. It begins when the CIP forms are sent to the departments, and that was October 26th of last year, and they were requested to be returned by November 30th, and here we are at January 22nd, being presented to the planning commission. And the planning commissioners have one month until their next meeting on February 26th to individually rank each project, and then that report is compiled and submitted to the city manager for consideration. The planning commission will be advised as to which projects will be undertaken once the budget has been approved by city council, and that's before June 30th, the end of the fiscal year. Next is an example of the capital request form used by departments to make their request. At the top of the form are fields to list the department, project name, estimated cost, where it is funded from, and priority ratings from 1 to 3, with 1 being highest. And this is a good place to mention that most of the ratings you'll see from the departments are a 1. They feel that all of their projects are extremely important, especially with capital projects just now being started to, just starting to be done after years of not being able to do very many capital projects. So you may need to decide on your own ratings independently, without relying on their ratings for guidance.
This question?
Sure.
So, they've rated these already?
Yes, and you'll see that if you go and look, all of the forms, just like these, are in your binders, and you'll see in the middle, like the green number, it says DPD or department priority, 1, 2, or 3, those will normally be in there already, but the other two, the CM priority, the city manager priority, and then the planning commission priority, should be blank.
I'm just saying, they should just leave them all blank, so we don't get swayed.
That's a good, something to consider for next year, we'll have them.
They're all 1, so. Everybody wants, everybody wants.
Everybody wants everything, so. The next section is a breakdown of the estimated costs by year, as well as the source of funds for that year. In this example, only a small amount of the total cost is expected to be incurred in the upcoming year, with the rest coming in future years.
Why is that, by the way? Is it purely financial, or is it other factors that go into that?
For this, it depends on what the project is and where it falls on their timeline. For example, a lot of road construction projects will have, like a first year will just be engineering and design costs, making the plans for the project, and then the majority of the construction costs, the more expensive ones, will be in future years. So the next section is an explanation of what the project is, why it is important, and any progress made on that project to date. And the final section covers the location of the project, how much the cost will be in years beyond the upcoming year, whether other matching funding would be lost if the project is not completed, the project type, and whether the project is in accordance with the master plan, council policy, and local, state, and federal regulations.
When the departments do their rating, do they consider that thing about whether or not there are matching funds?
They will, yes.
I mean, that would almost automatically make it a 1 or something?
You would think, because, yeah, if you're going to lose the funding, then it might be best to do that, and there are some projects in here that I get into that has been considered, so I'll bring that up when I get to that point. Yeah, so the next area is the planned street projects for next fiscal year, and we'll begin with the ones that are currently in progress. I know these are, there's a lot of them, so it's kind of small print up there. I'll begin at the top. The Niagara Street reconstruction, and that's from the railroad tracks on Niagara to Genesee Avenue. And then this is a good example, for Norman Street Bridge repairs, that's 80% grant-funded, we had to provide a 20% match for that, and so that will extend the life of the bridge over Veterans Memorial Parkway for up to 40 years, is the estimate. The LaPire Avenue reconstruction is a major project that, over a million dollars total, but that will be completed in fiscal year 2020. The two bridge projects are to perform preventive maintenance and to replace downspouts and do various repairs. Then the mill and resurface, and the Cape Seal projects are annual projects where different streets will be chosen and repaired each year. This year, some of the chosen streets are North Wheeler and then North Fifth Avenue. The Mackinac Street reconstruction is the part, portion of the road between Congress and State, and that will be finished this year. Sidewalk.
That's underway right now, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's what they're currently working on. Sidewalk repairs are next, and they'll be completed in regards to complaint letters that are filed with the city, and ADA sidewalk ramps will be installed in neighborhoods as well. The reconstruction of Harden Street between Court and Bay will wrap up in this next fiscal year, and new projects will be decided on in future years. And finally, a portion of Wick's Park Drive will be converted to a non-motorized trail, and this is mostly grant-funded as well. And on to the new street projects, and as we're finishing up the construction on Mackinac from Congress to State, we'll begin reconstructing it from Hamilton and Alexander, or between those two roads. And following that, in future years, there's a plan to reconstruct the section from Alexander to Congress, so that that whole portion of the road will be brand-new within the next few years.
Badly needed.
Yeah, absolutely. Next is the Hancock and Ames Street reconstructions. Those will be reconstructions and water main replacements from Michigan to Niagara, and the same will be done from Adams and Cass Street as well. 23rd Street from Wadsworth to Norman, and 17th Street from Walnut to Whittier will be milled and resurfaced, and it's important to note that 17th Street repairs are part of community development block grant funding. Next are the water and sewer projects. The Lake Linton project needs, Lake Linton is the lake next to the water treatment plant and the Anderson Center, and that needs to be dredged in order to increase capacity and improve quality of raw water stored there. The transmission made on Davis Road, that project is related to the water bond that was issued in fiscal year 2017 to replace raw and finished water mains along Davis Road in Kochville Township. The bond funds have been used up, and the remaining work is coming out of the water fund directly.
Will that still have, does this finish it, or there still will be more work to do on that?
That should be the end of this.
But I knew we had it last year.
Yeah, it's been going on for a few years, and we bonded it out, it was a major 20...
26 million.
26 million dollar project, so it's near completion, we only have 1.9 million dollars remaining on that, is the estimate. Next is the 20-inch redundant transmission feed on Junction Road, and that would improve service to the Frankenworth area. And we have sewer and water main maintenance, and that's an ongoing project and continues in fiscal year 2020 and in the future. An additional main will be added along Dixie Highway to improve reliability to Birch Run and Taymouth Township. And finally, lead service line replacement will be a major project for the next couple decades. The city has, the city has five years to verify its inventory of lead lines, and then has 20 years to remove and replace them all. And so for the first five years while the inventory is being created, only emergency replacements are being done, and that's why the amount is only $250,000 on a $60 million project.
Is there any guess or any thought, or do you have any rough idea of how much lead lines do we have? Is it most of them, is it some of them?
Right now, it's being, it's under inventory right now. The Department of Public Services and Water, Wastewater Services have contracted a couple part-time individuals to start pulling that information together. They need to have a sort of estimate by March.
I think that was what the plan is, yeah.
How do they do that? How do they?
They have it on, actually, they have it on like cards.
Yeah, they have cards of when.
Cards, so now they're trying to put everything into a system.
So it's a paper record, you have to go?
Yeah, but when it was laid, they kept a record of it, and so we have to go back and look at all these records over the last, how many decades?
Yeah, right.
There must have been a time in almost all of it.
Mm-hmm.
It seems that way, yeah, so I guess, you know, I'm not really sure what the percentage is, we won't know until they finish their project.
What constitutes an emergency? If this money is for this fiscal year, for emergencies?
Water main breaks, major just breakages and leaks and things like that, something that needs to be repaired immediately, where they call in and request assistance, they'll go out there and replace it, and that's what this funding is.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Does the water treatment plant treat anything involving lead, or?
Do we?
There's no connection between those two things?
Um, I don't believe so.
Obviously, we still have to replace them, so.
Right, yeah, but no, like, most of the lines have like a lining on the inside that's been built up over the years of like mineral deposits and things like that, so the lead isn't actually being directly touching the water.
Although it would, that's a long time ago.
Yeah, right, it would have, but over time, yeah, we've, they've been treated it, you know, they know what chemicals and treatment processes to do to the water to prevent that from happening.
Okay.
Last one, yeah, so then we just have the future water projects. These are planned for future fiscal years. Relining Miller Street will improve service to customers in the northern and western service areas, and the east-west transmission loop improves reliability and system pressure for the finished water system. And finally, we have the Ojibwe Island Grant Improvement Project, and this is a grant-funded project to make improvements to Ojibwe Island, including replacing the pedestrian bridge on the north side of the island, and creating a new multi-use pathway. The city needs to provide $105,000 in matching funds in order to receive $245,000 in grant money for this project, and this has been included in the current year's budget, however, work is not expected to be completed in the current year, so any additional funds or work will be carried over into fiscal year 2020. Are there any questions?
Who actually makes the final decision on the ratings?
On the ratings? That boils down to the city manager. What happens is the departments provide their ratings, and then you will provide your ratings, and then I'll receive all your ratings, compile it into, I usually take an average of what everybody decides on, and then we provide that information to the city manager, and he makes his decision based on what those ratings are, and also what our budgetary requirements, and, you know, how much money we actually have for these projects.
So, actually, that was one of my other questions. What is, we don't know at this point what total amount of money is available.
Right.
So it's only when the manager puts together the complete budget that some part of that is for capital improvements?
Yes and no. Some of these, like a lot of the projects, or road projects, as you can see, we have a good estimate of what our funding is from the state, our act $51 are going to be over the next few years, and that allows us to plan ahead, and that's why like a document like this comes in so handy, is that this engineering department, the streets department, can plan for how much of that, that money, they have an estimate of what they can use, and they build their timeline.
So they already have a pretty good idea of what's possible, and that's how they came up with?
Right, yeah, like that London, the city engineer, she keeps pretty meticulous track of all of that information, and she knows what she wants to do in each year.
So, when do we, when do you need this back from us, Pac?
Next meeting, so February 26th.
But Cassie, if we don't have another meeting in February, is there a way we can do it electronically to you? do it electronically to you?
I can provide the spreadsheets if that, that would be an easy way to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I'm saying.
That'd be awesome, I share it with them.
I'm just saying if he's, you know, if we don't do anything next month, you never know.
Yeah, good point. Don't necessarily meet unless we have business.
Okay, yeah, if that's the case, I can put together a spreadsheet where it just has the project name and then, like, whatever rating you wish to give.
Yeah, then you can get it, get it to Cassie, and she can get it to all of us electronically.
Yeah, I can do that.
That would make more sense. It pushed him to shop.
Yeah, it might be easier for you too, Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be. Saves me time since I have to do it anyways.
Yeah, you're gonna have to enter it in.
Right.
Might be a lot easier for everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
On all the sewer projects that are pretty substantial, does that involve any rebuilding of the street also, or only to the extent of covering up what you had to dig out?
These numbers are usually inclusive of, like, the whole project. So, digging into the street and then replacing what's underneath, and then replacing the street.
But only right there? It wouldn't be the surrounding six blocks or anything?
Right. No, it would just be whatever's in there. And that's usually like what I was mentioning, where the departments work together and, you know, so they don't have to go in there and dig up a brand-new street or anything like that. It's that it just increased costs dramatically.
Questions? Any questions? Anywhere? You all look so satisfied. Well, I guess then we will go to work on our ratings and see if we can change any of those ones. That'll be interesting.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
We don't have ten times as much money.
Yeah, hopefully, someday.
Someday, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
The next item on the agenda is public comment.
Do you want, do you want the updates on other developments?
I jumped ahead, didn't I?
I'll just give you a couple quick updates. So, I don't know if you guys noticed on that vascular clinic that was approved a couple months ago, they tore down the two houses.
They did.
So, they're moving forward on that. Looks like they're getting ready to lay the foundation. They have all their permits and everything through, and everything got approved, obviously, a while ago, but yeah, so it looks like it's moving forward.
They have concrete blocks sitting there, several little piles.
Mm-hmm, yep. The weather probably slowed them down a little bit, but.
Oh, I don't know why.
But, oh, they're moving along, so that's great. Solutions for Automation is a project that we approved. They have not submitted, they've redone their site plans and got new cost estimates. They're really worried for some reason about the parking lot, having to redo that, increase their costs about eighty-two grand, but, so that's their, that is their, what they're worried about, as well as then the taxes they'll have to pay off of that.
Was that right in front of the building? I forget where the parking lot, or was it?
So, right now, it's all gravel, and they're adding a thousand-square-foot expansion on the back. And then, they're also gonna have to pave that gravel lot because they can't leave it gravel. But I've been working with Lori Brown, the assessor, and she has given quotes on what the increase in taxes will be, and parking lots really don't affect your taxes anyways. So, I'm hoping that they'll be okay with this because they're, yeah, worried about all the costs. But in the scheme of things, the whole project is going to cost about six hundred thousand, so I'm hoping that eighty-two doesn't, they somehow figure out that that's not as big of a deal, but it is a lot of money, obviously, so. Still working with them on that. Jimmy John's on Michigan is, was just bought by a new guy, same as Luke, uh, der, it's something crazy. It's like Detter Ringo, Detter Raringo? I think there's a T in there, too. It's, I think he's Greek. I didn't ask him where he's from, but he has an accent and he spells Luke, L-U-K-E, so I'm not sure exactly what that means, but. So, they're redoing that whole building basically inside, and they're going to the Historic District Commission on Thursday because they're putting up a new sign. Still just a Jimmy John's sign, but it's different. The, there is a house on the corner of Davenport and Clinton Street that is requesting a variant, so, Jack, there will be a zoning board meeting in February, February 6th. He already has been parking his motorhome in his street side yard, and there were some complaints. Technically, he should be about ten feet farther into his backyard to park that, so he's trying to get a variance to be able. He has a gate that makes sense for him to pull right in straight and park it, so he's asking for a variance to be able to do that. And for that, all of the neighbors have been.
And I'm never saying, but what's the hardship? I'm just saying.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't make, I know.
Just that it's inconvenient to him, but.
It's economic hardship, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Not supposed to.
Yeah, well, he wanted to pay the thirty-five dollars, so. He'll be at the zoning board, uh, meeting. And then, lastly, Woody's Hot Dog Stand, which is also over in Old Town, they are paving a little portion across the street from them on Mackinac, so they're on the corner of Mackinac and, uh, Michigan. And then, across the street on Mackinac, there's a little section of land where they're going to be able to fit about seven parking spaces. They wanted to take some people off of the sidewalk who just pull up really quick and then go grab a hot dog. So, that one, actually, they've been working with the city since about 2017. There was a project created, so.
Are they gonna have to pave the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yeah, they're paving a little parking lot over there.
Okay, I'm just saying.
McDonald's is doing a big improvement at that intersection.
Yeah, McDonald's across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Major.
Yeah, yeah, and they're adding a second drive-through at McDonald's.
They're gonna add a second drive-through?
Mm-hmm, to match the one like down the street.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, it's on a hill, so they have to like build up that hill.
I know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be very interesting.
Kind of a tight spot for them to do that, but.
You could slide right down to Hamilton Street. On a night like this.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
While eating your cheeseburger.
But that's all I have, I have for that.
Cassie, a question. What, do you know anything about construction on the new animal shelter site?
No, I don't. I did, I do know, I remember hearing, hearing a few things about that, but nothing ever came through that I've seen, so maybe it came through before.
I had a county commissioner told me that he thought that the contractor thought that there were some real problems constructing on that site, and they were looking at an alternate site.
Oh.
Out of Tidabawasi.
Oh. I do know that they passed the millage, and they were hoping to use some of that millage. I think last year at the state of the city, county, they pointed out that they wanted to do renovations to that building, but, yeah, I haven't heard anything. I hope they don't move.
I, that's just kind of a word-of-mouth thing I got last week.
I'll have to, I'll look into that, see if I can find out what's going on. And then, um, I guess I could put this under here. I sent you all the invitation that you have on your desk for a strategic planning meeting. It's actually going on all day, but that is really the joint session where we're going to, Amy Lusk is the city attorney. She's gonna go over the new marijuana bill and what we can expect from that. And then, is there anything, what else is going on in that time period, Alanda?
During that time period?
Yeah.
It'll be an open discussion between city council, the planning commission, zoning board, and the DDA to talk about it as a whole, the proposal as a whole. So, you're, you should have got your invitations from Cassie and heard from Vicky. We're really encouraging you to come out, because it's almost like, it's part of the RRC, the redevelopment ready certification. It's a requirement within it, and it's actually one of three items left outstanding. We need your participation with the other two groups in this meeting.
We don't have, we don't have to test the products, do we?
No, if you get to test it.
I just wondered if this, part of the, part of the requirement is to test the product.
I don't think there'll be any samples.
So, Jack would say, what are we talking about exactly? See one of those.
We just thought that because it's such a hot issue and it packs all the different groups, that it was important, number one, to invite the planning commission, the zoning board. And then, when we met with MEDC, we added on the, um, DDA. Because at some point, you're gonna have, if it does get approved, you're gonna have to zone for it, and then, as a planning commission, you have to.
When, when is city council gonna even look at it?
Well, that's part of the open discussion. So, at, I think at ten o'clock, our city attorney will be presenting the proposal and discussing it. So, I would encourage everyone to be there at ten, to listen to the proposal. And then, at noon, we provide lunch, so it's a working meeting for the discussion between the different boards. So, I know that, we heard from you, Mr. Hanley, that I'm.
Anyone else know for sure they can be there? I cannot be there.
I don't know.
I cannot.
I'm gonna check my schedule. Cause you only, you only go to twelve-thirty, right? Or how long are you gonna go? If you're gonna have.
That segment is from ten to twelve-thirty.
Yeah.
Yep, that's, that's it.
Okay.
The other part is just our annual strategic planning session.
All that, yeah.
That's like the whole day. We have various people coming in. We have.
So, which one do you want us at?
From the ten to the twelve-thirty.
Okay.
And it's gonna be at the Anderson Center.
Yep.
I should be able to make it, but I have to be out of there by twelve-thirty.
If, if you just come in.
I have, I have just, I have another, I have another commitment, but I should be able to swing it.
Well, we appreciate it because, again, this is our last piece of, you know, the segment.
Certification, and it's really important that we have people from every single group.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Awesome.
Okay. And now, I see no one here for public comment. So.
Move to a journal.
Second.